Let's go ahead and call the regular council meeting on Monday. It's September 2nd, 2025, over at 7:00 PM. Please drive to the in-location location.
I'd like to have my father, we thank you for this opportunity. We have a serving you, we're happy with each of us. You must listen that we need and the guidance that we need. Continue to help the city in its growth and help it grow for your betterment. We pray that you continue to be with each of us and watch over us and guide and direct us in order to save your order. For my assy things in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need to go ahead and amend the agenda to add a conditional police officer position, conditional offer. And we need to add it to police chief's report. Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Do you have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Karen, run all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 18th, 2025, and the special meeting of August 25th, 2025?
I move to approve the meeting for August 18th and the special meeting for August 25th.
August 25th? We have a motion, or is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Well, please comment on the discussion. Uh, so, I just wanted a little bit of discussion. It was brought to my attention that maybe I was pushing the meeting a little bit too fast. And, uh, we can wait for Councilman Boss to... Is he taking the call?
I think he's trying to silence it.
Put it on airplane mode. I don't know who that was. Apologize, your honor.
Oh, that's all right. So, uh, it was brought to my attention that maybe I was pushing the meeting a little bit too fast and I didn't hear folks talking about how we didn't have the appropriate date or cater it permanent. So, uh, I'll try to be more cognizant of that in the future. It ended up making us have a special meeting because I missed that detail. Um, but I'd also remind the council, if any of you notice something's going on, please stop the meeting at any time and get us back on track because, um, sometimes I do miss things. So, uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Uh, is there any nominations for recognition from the council? Karen and Ann will go ahead and move on to certificate of recognition. Bernie Terry, uh, the coal car at the post office. It doesn't look like Bernie's in attendance tonight, so we'll send her her certificate of recognition. Moving on to citizens' business verbal. Item number one, Kevin Falk, for concerns. Uh, I see that Mr. Falk's not in the chambers tonight, so we'll go ahead and move on to citizens' business and writing, which there is none. Then on to old business. Item number one, American Legal Publishing and Civic Plus Muni Code. I originally asked for that to be an agenda item for the Finance Committee. But, uh, I don't know if I made myself clear, so I don't think the Finance Committee handled that one. So, um, uh, well, we need to, uh, see if American Legal is willing to make an offer to, uh, add the additional...
Yeah, the 25, your booklets.
Yeah, um...
Instead of six.
Municipal code books, yeah. Add 19 and see if their, uh, cost is comparable. So then we'll, uh, I'll call them tomorrow and then we'll try to, um, add this to the agenda for the next council meeting. Is there any questions from the council? No. Okay. Moving on to old business, item number two, RVs and mobile home districts. And I believe this is what we tabled from the last meeting. Susan, have the floor, Chuck.
Well, the planning commission has been working on this ordinance for several months. And there's been numerous times people want to know where they can park an RV. And so, anyway, planning commission discussed that quite a bit. Come up with some requirements and I guess is proposing that RVs be allowed to be parked in the mobile home district on a lot of the vacant lots that are over there. Everything has to be skirted, set up. Actually, this has gone through the building committee also. And actually, there is even a checklist for RVs before they can be moved in and set up. I guess we want to make sure that the RVs are in good shape. That we don't want pieces of junk per se parked over there. Like they would also have to be hooked up to water and sewer, which I guess will help increase some of the revenue for the city.
We, uh, we didn't want them hooking up water flow to the guy next door.
Correct.
Is somebody gonna monitor whether they're good?
The building inspector.
Oh, yeah.
What about up to name license plates on them?
Uh, if they're parked on a lot, I don't think they need license plates. If they're gonna be moved, then yes, they would have to be properly licensed.
Is there some designation that once the building inspector has looked at this and approved it, that, you know, if we drive by and we see that it isn't skirted and, you know, what, is there, is there some kind of designation that this person has passed?
Uh, yeah. On the form, uh, the building inspector would have signed off on that as the condition and that it's properly set.
If you get a building permit, stick it in your window.
Correct.
I want these guys to have something stuck in their window.
Okay, we can add that to it.
Well, that's, no, who was that's the council? But can you see what I'm saying? That we wouldn't know whether or not this person had been inspected. We wouldn't know if they, you know, that the city had even looked at them. If they just have an RV sitting there without something that says, "I have my permit. Here it is in my window."
So how would you file those to look enough at that question?
Um, again, on the building permit website that, I guess, the city has, it lists address, they have the street address. And we can just look up street address and see what it is. And most of them will have to be probably issued these street addresses because they're mostly vacant lots.
Does this have to eventually be in ordinance?
Yes.
This is it, right here. It doesn't say it gives this guy sticker in the window.
So, in order for them to have an RV parked on the lot and then hooked up to services, they would have had to have made it that far in the inspection process. So if, I mean, you come to a property and there's one sitting there, um, you would expect that it had been that far to, or else they could take it.
Correct.
So, I understand what you're saying about having some kind of a placard or some kind of identification that says the past inspection. But that would kind of be inferred by the fact that it's even allowed to be parked there hooked up to services. So I don't know. Do we need to add?
Mr. Mayor, uh, quite frankly, lots of them get parked and nobody even knows about it.
Right.
And so I guess I tend to agree with Mr. Boss that it would be nice to have a, some sort of form in the windows that's visible.
Okay. Well, I mean, so then we'll have to go back to the drawing board, right?
And we use to have that to submit to the developer.
So if you say nobody knows about it, how do you get them to hook up to services?
Some of them don't, or they run to the neighbor.
Chuck, how many people with this would not be in compliance as an estimate off the top of your head?
Around town, right now? Five to 10.
So it's not as though there's a little small population that's gonna be like, buy this immediately?
We've spoken about this, Chuck, and it seemed like, um, this is a good way for the city to get a little bit of extra revenue. And, uh, we do have a lot of mobile home spaces around town that are just set vacant. So having an ordinance someplace to regulate it seems like it'd just make some common sense so you can garner a little bit more revenue for the city.
Right. I've only got several phone calls of people that even just want to park for six months or even three, um, but they just can't find a spot to do it. And, uh, they know somebody has a lot in the mobile home district, but at this point in time, they can't do anything with it.
How often do you see that the current parks are full to run over to the mobile home district here to, to have the excess?
I don't know, I guess they really haven't paid that much.
Last couple of weeks, I've just been looking around when I first started looking at this and coming in here. You know, especially along over by the travel center. Been only one out there in that parking lot the last several weeks. Just been empty. Not very many been up on the behind, uh, motor end on Main Street, West Side Town. You know, so just wondered how much of that is there want to be used, the mobile home park area is not going to the park areas that's available.
It's gonna take a lot more than a five-person economic development board or the seven-person city council or the five-person county commissioners or, or even the hospital board. Um, the, the public at this point really needs to have a stake in the game and needs to come forward and to have some honest discussions and some ideas. And, and even more than just the community, I'd say the younger people, those younger people in their twenties that are in Newcastle and Weston County raising their kids, those people that don't want to leave, those people that want their kids to grow up in Newcastle and graduate an NHS doggy just like they did. Those are the people that are going to have to step up and come forward and, and offer some solutions and, uh, do a little bit of soul searching and becoming a more active member in the community.
Not going to the park areas that's available? Or is there really full on these, um, that they own that?
But there are some people that own the lot. They don't want to build anything, but they do want to be able to park RV from a short period of time.
Those RV parks and those spaces out there, I don't think they have services. They're tougher, maybe electricity, they're poor in there. Everything's contained or, and they're...
I don't think there's full services out there, but... Mr. Mayor, I think maybe the... I thought our set facility, there are full services as well as...
Both sewer and, and...
Water.
Electricity. So, I guess this is an interesting topic because we don't want to negatively impact, um, private business by offering, um, you know, it would essentially push business away from them. But then, I, I mean, personally, I'm looking at it from the city's point of view was wanting to gain a little bit more evidence for the city, which I think is a positive thing. So, uh, I don't know. What's the council's pleasure? Do we want to table this and see if Chuck adds the part about the placard and then revisit this at the next council meeting? Or is this something the council's not in favor of at all? What's the consensus?
You know, one thing that struck me just a little bit too is, you know, reading through this and what you had mentioned just a little bit ago is, is they need to place the park for a certain amount of time, six months. There is no time limit. So that's, that's a three-year, four-year, five-year could be set up there for it. And this struck me just now when you said probably six months. And it's like, hmm, never thought of a tiny piece of this. And there's nothing in here, language or time.
They gotta say intent was about the set of time.
Yeah. I'm just trying to correlate between, you know, what I'm hearing and then what we're looking at trying to pass.
Like, would we have to, they have to renew their permit every six months or every three months?
If they're hooked up to utilities, why would you have to do that?
Correct. Because it's sort of then signed off.
I'm reading.
Still get the money.
I mean, this also provides people with an option. Say they don't want to live in another key part with a bunch of neighbors. Maybe they could find a lot and they don't want to have neighbors close by. I mean, there's, there's pluses and minuses, the whole idea.
Have we had any input from the RV park owners?
No.
Okay. It's reasonable to think that if they park it in, um, a regular mobile home lot, that it's going to be less expensive than it is to park it in an RV lot.
Or extend the period, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, a question. Is there anything on the checklist that talks about adding on, building on to the mobile home or the RV?
No.
Would that be something that I think I would like to see on there? Where we don't park an RV on a lot and then we just start building around it and now we have a full-on structure standing there.
Also, almost like a park model, like down in the ski or something?
We've got some of those.
Well, I guess we've supplied you with some fruit for thought, Chuck, to pay back to the, to the zoning committee.
Okay. Um, Council, if I may. Chuck, there's the public hearing and notice and publishing requirement there.
Right.
I went and looked through that today. One of the things with that is that I was kind of baffled by, the Planning and Zoning Commission actually has to do with publishing and then they have to have a public hearing and then bring it to the city council. So, um, I, did you guys have a public hearing? How about you answer?
Uh, don't believe so. I guess this was just a draft ordinance. We wanted to get kind of your input and council's input.
Good catch, Councilor.
Well, I guess, uh, when you guys do have said meeting, maybe invite some of the RV park owners and see if they have any input.
They definitely have some input here.
Okay.
Okay. Does the council have any further questions about the RVs and mobile home district?
I do. So, just for clarification, you're talking about mobile home parks? Are we talking like, I can't think what street it is, but if you go out on Mercy Road, it's the first lap after Mulchers. Is that...
Mercy Circle.
Yeah.
So that's what, that's kind of what you're talking about. See if there are lots there, somebody wants to put an RV there.
Right.
Sheridan Street.
Okay. I guess what we're talking about is also mobile home district, which is basically stuff out on Wood Street, Camp Red, that area is mobile home district.
Where the wire is, was early on.
Wires.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's the same thing that's up there? On Mercy and Traxxas.
So does the owner of the mobile home, like, Pat, you don't understand, like, how people own mobile homes? Do they have the right to say that they don't want that there?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, mobile home park owners can kind of kick anybody out if they want.
They're definitely get the rip. They're getting a lot of it.
No, I know, I know that part.
I mean, I've noticed too, Sheridan Street, there's tons of vacant lots on there and they've been pulling a lot of trailers out. So, just in general, I think, I think this would be a positive thing, but it'll be interesting to see, um, when you come back. But is there any further questions for Chuck on this topic?
A quick one?
Go ahead.
Uh, how would this affect, somebody says, uh, they got a camper, they just want to put it in the driveway, put electric to it for the winter. Storage not used, you know, how would this affect them?
That wouldn't affect them. As long as mobile home park, or RV is parked on somebody's lot with nobody living in it, that's perfectly acceptable.
You know, for storage, everybody has, likes campers, go out for the summer, you know, do summer tours with family. I just wondered how it would affect them for storing it on their property.
No, that's as long as they're not living in it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Chuck? Karen and Ann will go ahead and move on to item number three, re-park lots 21 to 24, block 11.
Is the council's majority where there's purpose of that?
So let's, uh, old parking lot where the drive-thru used to be for Purple Bank?
Right, but it's just down over the, that retaining wall is, yeah, it's all that piece. Ace Hardware has been using that lower piece for years, leasing it. Uh, they want to buy it now from the company, so that's why we have to replat. And that's why the, those, I guess, lots 24B and 21B, uh, that's why they're shorter because of the location of the retaining wall.
What are they gonna do with it?
Uh, they're gonna just continue storing their materials there.
And so it's gonna look like a junkyard.
Uh, they're storing material there right now, so I don't think it will change. They just want to...
But this goes, this continues on up to the street?
Correct.
So are they gonna put stuff in the...
They're only buying the lower part. Um, and the other part will remain with Weston County.
Oh, so they're just buying what they're using, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Okay, so are we approving and changing the ordinance?
Re-flating.
Plenty, what? Let me, let me get this straight. Now, this, this goes clear up here, so we're gonna be changing...
The replating, the whole thing?
So this is what they're using, right?
Correct, that's what they're using. This is the remaining parking lot. If you look on that side, this is the lower part. This is that upper part. You could, uh, Ace Hardware is just personally perusing those four.
Okay, these are your lots.
Yes, those are your, your lots.
And when we change the zoning of this, what, what can you do with this?
Uh, because it remains a parking lot.
Okay, it's gonna...
We're not, we're not changing the zoning.
Well, we're not for that?
No, not for this either, because that's not properly.
Okay.
This is kind of, you know, kind of hatched in here, this whole, all of this is gonna be replatted. That would be everything.
So just this portion here?
More lots in there now.
And then we're, we're, because it belongs to the county, we're making it city sensefully, right? Like, so we can, they can sell it?
Uh, well, it's still in town limits.
Okay.
Uh, so they, the county owns that piece of property, but they want to sell the lower piece to Ace Hardware.
Okay.
And the upper part is still what remains.
Okay.
So, we just need to entertain a motion to, um, to replat the, the, is that, this is specifically what, like, we gotta do the whole 21 through 24?
No, we're just approving the replat of lots, or lots 21 through 24, block 11.
Why do we have to replat it and all?
Because it's called, it's for counties now, and now they're buying part of that.
Actually, they're breaking up previously some divided lots, so that has to be replatted.
Okay, so we're furthering their sale. So does the county, or the council entertaining a motion to replat lots 21 through 24 in block 11 so that Ace Hardware can buy it from the county?
And authorize the mayor to sign the plaque.
And authorize the mayor to sign the plaque?
Yes.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm second.
We have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, uh, sold that alley there. Between their existing building and the land they want to buy.
Yeah, there's an alley.
Re-protect it.
Their existing building in the building, or the property they want to buy?
Yes.
That alley.
Mm-hmm.
So, is there anything to that? Or, I mean, they stockpile a lot of stuff in that alley.
Uh, they, they should have to move the stuff out of the alley.
Exactly.
So if we get this sold and we ask them to move this stuff into that, maybe that would... Is there any further discussion? Karen and Ann, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Chuck. Okay, uh, old business, item number four, RCAC project. Um, we actually have that in committee and council under reports due, so we'll go ahead and move that out of old business. And remember, I can talk about it as item number one in committee and council under reports. So we'll move on to the new business. Item number one, erosion and sediment control standards booklet.
Wow.
Has the council had a chance to review the, uh, erosion and sedimentation control booklet?
That was some heavy reading. Did you come up with that? That book?
Yes.
That's pretty cool. I like all your old pictures.
So we've had problems with, uh, construction sites around Newcastle. And Greg couldn't attest to that because he has to go out, clean the streets and clean up the mud and everything on all the streets when there's heavy rain. Uh, we did have one incident a couple of years ago. One neighbor's property, or he took out his short retaining wall. Uh, it flooded his property, ran over to the neighbor's property three or four times. And so that kind of what encouraged the planning commission to start looking at this. Again, we showed that, I guess, it's why it's needed, uh, several details on how to avoid erosion. And then also, uh, the variant is a permit form that has, uh...
This is to, to do any earth moving up over 10 yards or...
Over, yes, for a certain amount.
I think it's a great idea. I like it. This will have to become an ordinance, right?
I think that this is just adopted, it's not, uh...
I don't know.
I don't have a copy of it. And this is just, uh, basically the outline more or less for anybody who's wanting to actually do some earthworks or anything like that, like construction and a permit, right?
Correct.
And I think the council will just move on the adoption of it.
This is not enforceable?
Yes. Um, and I know one of the other problems is there's several sites that are, I guess, muddy right now. People are tracking mud from those sites onto the, not on the streets. So we give details on how to fix the driveways, so that does not occur. And that's the other several instances of that around town.
Uh, so, you know, there's people that complain about our town being dirty, right? But, uh, this has been a thing for the whole time I've lived here, is trucks haul mud and junk across town off construction sites. And then it dirties up our town, right? So this has been a complaint that I've heard a lot. So, I mean, uh, I feel like it's something that we should look at. But when you first, uh, first brought it to the council, I thought it was a knee-jerk, um, thing because, you know, we had one incident of a neighbor getting another neighbor's swamp and took out a wall. But then it sounds like it's continued to happen.
There's several more sites around town.
And, and I know in some of the larger municipalities that I've lived in, we had, um, you know, we had, uh, there were, we'd get heavily fined if, if you were dragging mud all across town because the citizens there didn't like the mud getting slopped around town. So, um, I don't know if it's the councils, uh...
I'll just move that we adopt this, that as our policy for earth moving in the city limits.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt erosion and sediment control standards booklet as policy. Do we have a second? Sir? We have a second. Um, so we have a motion on the floor, property seconded, is there any discussion?
Well, I'd like to say, as I made the motion, I, I think that now we have a policy. We have something that we can show people and say, okay, this is the way we want it to work in our city. I, I just think it makes good sense.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mrs. Long.
Okay, I have been a paper carer for a long time. Only the saddle subdivision, which is Stirk Street and the other, I'm not gonna go. I had to go down through that muddy alley, my vehicle was covered, so I decided to start walking. And I'm gonna tell you something, and people had to fight that muddy, and, uh, because it's a private, it's a private run through there anyway. And I'm gonna tell you something, they had mud back and forth out of there all the time. The private owners, because you guys were fixing the street. Okay, so you're, you're complaining about the mud, what about when you guys tear it up? And people have to come out of their own private drives, had that mud all over their cars. And then you guys have your stuff where you're moving and it has mud all over it. Are you gonna wash it every time you come out of the street? Because it isn't just other people who's bringing mud. It's construction people, the type of cities, the county, or whatever. That mud comes with construction. And I, I'll tell you what, I walk down once on the street, get the papers, okay, here we are, I'm walking, I got mud this deep on my shoes from your construction. And what, I got the other stuff, I got just as much mud.
So, um, before you continue, Mrs. Long, uh, Chuck is there? So, basically the policy is for, uh, like, erosion control and so. Because I mean, like, she has a point, right? We have alleys and stuff that maybe are muddy. And then, say, the, the garbage truck drives through it and hauls some mud into the street. Is that kind of what you're going for, Mrs. Long, in this?
It isn't, it isn't, I haven't seen much muddy, I'm talking about when you have construction of your own. And you're fixing a street and you have to route it, and it's rained and rained and rained, and this, some of these in and outlets are gumbo. And when it gums on your tires, you know it.
Yeah.
Because my father down here, on what you're calling an alley, he got the floor services bone gloter, got permission to do it. He brought in river rock, then he moved the gumbo back, and we hauled several loads. And my dad's 59 Chevy Apache truck that he had. And he also made sure he got something to roll that gravel in, he pushed it in. You couldn't drive down here, the mud was fat deep and sticked on his car all the time. And I've been in that little house for 55 years. And me and my brother shoveled enough gravel off of that pickup. So the city did not put the gravel in, not even down to Mike and Sheila, it was not down the road. Dad did all of that for you guys. And he never charged you one dime. But you're always pick, everybody's always picking at me for what I, I have, or what I've done. You know, people own stuff. And then, the deed is not, the deed you're looking for is not under law and for that private drive?
Okay.
It's under Frank Crawford and Catherine.
I think we're starting to get off track, Mrs. Long.
But I'm saying, that's how much mud was down there before you fixed it.
Okay.
But, you know, when you're doing construction, this is what I'm saying, you got all that mud coming out and off of it.
Okay, so we need a recog of, like, city vehicles and things of that nature when we're?
And that, that includes, you know, you're sending these people down that street to go to their house in the back. And they're getting mud all over. Come on, you gotta give somebody a break. And I can see the salt and erosion thing too. Because there's, there's a lot of walls right now that's falling down from all the rain that's there.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot of rain this year, it's kind of?
Like last year, we didn't get no rain and you didn't see the walls falling down from that. Okay?
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Long.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Karen, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, we adopted this earlier than sedimentation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to committee and council member reports. Uh, items one and two are gonna kind of coincide, so we have the Rural Community Assistance Corporation project. And, uh, also, um, I need to ask the council, um, how we want to handle it, because like, in order to maintain, you know, like, our public meeting laws and everything, uh, I wanted to maybe form an economic development committee to handle business in relation to the project that council approved at the last meeting to make the match. So, uh, I wanted to be on the committee. And I need a couple of volunteers, two volunteers, uh, to be on the committee with me so that we can start handling the business involved with, uh, the Rural Community Assistance Corporation project, the HUD grant that's gonna start carrying around.
I'll put my name on the hat.
Do we have another volunteer?
Sorry.
Okay, John, um, um, so, uh, we'll go ahead and make that the economic development committee. That'll be a new committee that's recognized by the council, will you add that to the committee, please? Thanks. And then, um, so then, committee members, we have two proposed dates, uh, moving forward. So, uh, Friday, September 5th at 1:00 PM, or Friday, September 12th at 3:00 PM. Is there either of those dates that would be favorable to you guys? It's, uh, for the BRE team, Newcastle, uh, BRE team, um, for the HUD 23 kickoff call. And so this would be, uh, one of the preliminary meetings to start progressing of the project.
Okay, so this, this can be Friday?
At 1:00 PM.
1:00 PM.
Or next Friday at 3:00 PM. Is either of those dates that's?
They're both good.
They're both good for me.
Okay, and I think, uh, the, the 12th at 3:00 PM would work best for me.
Okay.
So that's what we'll be, uh, Friday, September 12th at, uh, 3:00 PM.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll, yeah, we can either do it in my office or up here in the council chambers, whichever you guys prefer. Okay, let's do it in my office. Then that'll get some?
You're the mayor.
Yeah. Okay, well, do it in my office, September 12th at 3:00 PM. And, uh, and then I'm sure that that's gonna, uh, that preliminary meeting is gonna start pushing us towards, trying to post, uh, job, uh, posting for the community coordinator. And some of that, uh, stuff that we need to get in place, uh, to move forward. Um, so, does anybody have any questions about item one or two?
I want to ask about community coordinator, is that, is that position is just strictly part-time, right? It's not, we're not looking at a full-time person?
No, I think, uh, I think the position says something about it being about, uh, 20 hours a week. Um, and then, so, another thing, council is, uh, you know, open meeting laws and everything. Um, I'll be able to share some of the information, uh, as we progress through this process. Uh, but I'm gonna send it to the whole council, but you guys are not to respond to those emails. They're only for informational purposes only. So I'll share everything that I got as we move forward. Um, but then, so the, the rest of the council that's not on the committee will be aware. But we don't respond to those emails, is that clear?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is there any further questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm not familiar with this Rural Community Assistance Corporation, can you give me a brief overview of what it is?
Yeah, so they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Um, they, uh, work with small communities and encourage them to community economic development. Um, so we, uh, in the last, because you're usually here, that's true, so. Uh, the last, like, three meetings, we've been talking about it. Um, we even had, uh, Ambie Rembold, she's, uh, she works for the Rural Community Assistance Partnership. What is her, Ambie's title? Uh, she's the regional field manager for building rural towns.
But it, it, it's a, it's a business corporation, it's not a government entity, am I correct?
No, they're a nonprofit.
Nonprofit, but still, they want their salary paid and everything else. It's gonna be some expenses, isn't it?
Well, so the RV, the council already approved the match. So we got a, the, the Rural Community Assistance Corporation got, uh, a HUD grant through, uh, USDA RD, rural development, right? Um, so we had to make a small match, 5,000 a year for a three-year project.
I read, I read that, so last month.
$15,000, and then that opened up, uh, $25,000 a year from them to, uh, from, from RV, right? Like, fun project. So we, you know, for five grand, we got another 25 grand, so we'll be able to pay $30,000 a year.
Okay, and this is development in housing or business?
So, uh, community economic development, so businesses, right? And then, like, it's also going to be for the community, right? So there's gonna be workshops involved with this, and the community coordinator will, will help put together the workshops. And it's training for regular citizens if they want it, right? To like, come to a class and learn about entrepreneurship, or learn how to do bookkeeping for a small business. And, uh, that way, uh, so RCAC, uh, Rural Community Assistance Corporation, also, um, offers small business loans. So like, say somebody goes to entrepreneurship, uh, training, and they come up with an idea for a business, then they can approach RCAC about getting a small business loan, to maybe start a business. So like, uh, some of the examples that we're giving at, while one of the meetings, we had a workshop prior to a meeting, was, uh, they worked with, uh, Lewis Town, uh, Montana, and they were able to, um, leverage on average of about, like, $1.3 million in grants to communities through the course of these projects, right? And then, uh, they were able to start some businesses in these communities, like, uh, one of their crowning achievements was a brewery.
Okay.
So, um...
But that would be, that would be part of the economic development? Am I correct, in order, you know, that's why you're combining it too? I think that's a good thing, but I haven't had, I haven't heard a word about asking the chamber to be involved in this, because that's part of their mission.
Right.
In any, any town. I would like to see the chamber involved in this too, and on your committee.
So, the, the chamber, right, like, the, the nature of the grant, the HUD grant? Um, it doesn't work with chambers, right? Like, the chamber can come and attend, but like, because I, I was like, of the same mind. Um, like, maybe trying to get somebody from the chamber to work as a community coordinator, you know, like?
That would be beautiful.
Doesn't seem like it would be a good idea, but unfortunately, there's, the way that the grant is structured, it, it doesn't work like that.
So it leaves the chamber out of this?
Well, I'm sure that the chamber can be involved in some capacity, we just can't hire somebody from the chamber, like, we can't utilize the chamber in a way?
Well, they're, they're mainly a volunteer organization anyway, so there wouldn't be any hiring. Uh, but I'd like, I, as a business person here in town, I would like to see the chamber involved in it. I would, I hope you, you know, extend that to them to see if they want to do it.
Yeah, so, the thing is, is this is all really new, right? And I'm not completely, you know, um, up to date as to like, how mechanics of a project will work, right? So like, this is just the very beginning. So, um, we will come back, the, the economic development committee will come back. Every council, uh, meeting and report as to like, what is going on with the, the project and how things are progressing.
Well, hopefully at some point that they will be involved, the license gets set up and, you know, off the ground, get moved. But thank, thank you for your explanation.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any further questions? Do you have anything, Mr. Black, what's going on?
Yeah.
Um, all right, uh, moving on to, uh, the pocket park. Uh, so, I'm getting a little bit of scrutiny for the pocket park idea. Uh, there's, uh, some people that are upset because, um, they don't like the idea of another park. So, uh, the idea?
Basically based on what?
Um, well, there are some people, uh, councilman boss, that think that we shouldn't have any parks, right? That there shouldn't be any parks in Newcastle, that it's a frivolous expense, and, uh, they don't agree with it. They don't think we should have a budget for parks.
I think they're a terrible minority, and I don't think we should pay much attention to them.
Well, I catch a lot of flack from terrible minorities in our community sometimes, councilman boss, but, so, um, the idea behind the pocket park is we have a lot that, um, is in a certain level of disrepair. Um, and we'd like to clean it up, maybe put some benches in there, the council is voiced that we would like to have, like, some community involvement in the design. And then, um, just making something that is really nothing right now into an inviting place for people to sit, and then possibly even citing a bathroom there at some point. Because that's been a complaint from business owners, is they'd like to have some public restrooms, because they're, they, they get tired of people using their restrooms. And, and then not giving them any patronage, just using the restroom and leaving, right? So, uh, and then, when we have activities? So, uh, and then when we have activities downtown, we got a restroom, we got a park, you know, a place to send the kids maybe to go hang out or the adults are walking up and down the main street, you know? Just, just something nice, right? Like, some, someplace, uh, you know, something out of nothing. So, uh, I, um, did have a little hangup. Uh, there were some concerns by an adjacent business owner. I went and spoke to those folks and, uh, I believe that Mrs. Cash and Mr. Cash are gonna move forward with signing the lease. So, uh, it is the lease that the council moved on and I've already signed it. So I'm just waiting for their signature and then we can start doing something with the pocket park. And, uh, it's my intention to do a lot with volunteer work, uh, go clean it out, try to make it as little of the city crews involvement as we can as we move forward, but maybe at some point when we need to hook up to utilities or site a building, then, uh, uh, we can do that. So, um, that's my report on the pocket park. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to.
I do have, I do kind of have something. I agree with Mr. Boss on the minority or whatever against parks in Newcastle. I think we have beautiful parks. And thank you very much, Peter Woods Committee, because they are gorgeous, I think all of them are. So I think we should be very proud of our parks.
I am proud of our parks and your effort of our public work department.
Thank you for that feedback and I agree. I, I enjoy our parks, I like taking my kids there, I like our activities that we have there and, um, I think parks are great. So, uh, is there anything further? Hearing nothing, we'll go ahead and move on to item number four, finance committee. Does the finance committee have a report?
Yes, he does.
Well. You got stuff with that.
Yeah.
So the finance committee did meet to review and look over some options stuff, you know? They had, uh, First Northern Bank present during that meeting. Um, obviously we'd like to try to get some information back from our other financial institutions that we have money with, like the Federal Bank. But with the meeting that we had with First Northern Bank and the opportunities that they presented to us and looking through the accounts that we currently have, which was multiple accounts, um, with the money that we have in those accounts and some of the projects that we have slated for probably in the next three to five years, that are gonna take quite a bit of this money for those projects, because we're not gonna be able to get grants. We really felt that with what we've got so far with money from First Northern Bank and what they're willing to provide us for, um, interest rates, um, would be well in our best interest to move quite a few of these accounts within that. Once we get feedback from Federal Bank, that a few of these accounts are within Federal Bank right now. And when we review those percentage, um, rates returns, they're not, they're not just what First Northern could be giving us. So we wanna give them the opportunity to try to, at least try to come up and match with First Northern is trying to give us. Obviously, the city is almost like we run this as a business.
This place is full of, you can tell the people that like to be with old people, because they really take care of you good and are very kind.
Twice a day, every day, activities, people have an organized activity that's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo. We play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here, it's a good place to be.
So we wanna give them the opportunity to try to, at least try to come up and match with First Northern is trying to give us. Obviously, the city is almost like we run this as a business. And they understood this when they talked to me on that day. That the money we are trying to, um, put into some of these accounts to cover projects or even money that we're trying to put as part of grant money as seen, is how some of this stuff we do use. So our best interest is to make the most money off of what we have already into that, that we know we're going to spend. So as of right now, until we get the, probably some feedback from, um, Federal Bank, you know, we don't have any recommendation of moving, that there are a couple of these accounts that, you know, that they have to give back to us. There are probably a couple of these that we wanna move probably to First Northern, because they're already gonna give us, um, a little better interest rate. Probably almost three and a half percent more. It was almost at that point we were pretty much ready to start moving money over into First Northern, um, just because of the differences in the money already and then the more weight, you know, to kind of lock these into, um, let's say the year CD. We know we're gonna have projects within the next couple of years, that some of this money's gonna be earmarked for. So that can be locked in already at these current interest rates that they're gonna offer us, because these are gonna change pretty quickly.
Pretty quick, that's what we need to do.
We, almost on that verge of, of the interest rates wanting to change on us, is trying to jump on that to be able to lock that interest rate in.
May I look at the.
And they said they would work with us with different CDs, length of CDs. So once we get kind of with Greg and Stacy, we can work together and figure out when things are due, when we're gonna need money. I think we should work on this, go on this.
So, uh, since the committee's probably not gonna make any recommendations tonight, like you're trying to follow up with.
Yeah.
Dustin Bizdale's, or, excuse me. Um, then, uh, maybe you guys want to have another finance committee meeting prior to the council meeting after you get some more information?
Yeah, there were a couple of these that, um, one of the savings accounts, they're in there, giving us only a one percent interest, um, which is nine hundred and three thousand dollars in there. This is gonna be pretty close to what we're gonna need for the next project in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, probably.
And none of that project, as I understand, is, um, ability to get any grant money. So that's all gonna be in the city to do.
Yeah.
So if we're able to get another three percent for the next two years or so that put in this, um, in our minds when we're looking at this, it's a no-brainer.
No, we, we need to make this city's money work for us. One percent doesn't seem like.
It's not even keeping up with inflation.
Yeah, it's not really working for us, so.
Well, and we also decided that, um, staying in Newcastle is a big benefit to our town, because they do do a lot for our town and they wanna support families.
You know, they're, they're a local business and we're local, we're trying to keep our business local. We've always done leases and purchases through either one of the banks, um, First Northern and First Date. At the time, you know, they've done several of those for us. And others didn't really do a lot of lease purchases with us.
Um, so when I first approached the council about this, I, I was strictly looking at percentage rates that were offered by the RIF, right? But then after the presentation from the bank and everything, it is, to me, it just didn't seem, um, fair to our local banks that, you know, um, you know, Mike Morrison said that he could do three point nine percent interest, which was point six percent different than the long-term investment that they give. So like pulling our money away from somebody that we trust and we worked with for years for cash or percentage point, just doesn't seem, um, that it's worth it. And then there was the question, because I don't know tons about the organization, my own government basket fund. It's, uh, it's larger than just our state. They have a portfolio that encompasses lots of different states. So we don't know exactly what they're investing our money to do. And so there's just a lot of like questions, whereas if we invest, we'll be.
I do feel that this opens some doors and eyes that wouldn't have guessed that first guess of it. We would've just let everything ride as is and wouldn't have been having this information to be able to go. We could be another three percent, maybe three and a half percent more added to this. And that's a, that's a big interest boost to what we already have in the council.
That sounds crazy.
Well, from now on, the rest of the council's gonna be watching, the finance committee will keep them out of this.
So. So, uh, yeah, I, I mean, I, I just feel like it's really important that we get our money working for us so that we can, um, further some of our projects.
I know at the end of the meeting, there was one of us that were in possession and we were ready to move money over into First Northern Bank because of the jump in interest. We really wanted to have, you know, to have the opportunity to.
See if there's something they can do first.
To see what they could do before we transfer them.
To make it a little bit more fair, I think the committee, uh, that's true.
Mr. Mayor, I just figured out, that's seventy-one thousand ninety-five dollars in two years. That, that four percent.
That four percent.
On that nine hundred and ninety-nine, or nine hundred and five two thousand.
What's better than a coke in the night?
I think we, we can make a coke apart from seventy thousand.
So, uh, the committee will work with each other and, and, um, Mr. Ice, and then try to have something to report on the next.
As soon as we hear something back with, or if, you know, any, uh, information or if they have a meeting to discuss the same.
They have been contacted.
Uh, I.
Yes, Justin's out at the office till Friday.
Well, thanks committee, and then, um, I would like to take a moment to, uh, when I put things to committee, there's been a couple of meetings where we didn't have a committee report from the committee that was called. So, um, I don't have specific examples right now, but there's been a couple of meetings in the last eight months where we called the committee and then there was no report given. So, um, I just want the council to be cognizant whenever there's a committee assignment, um, that the idea is to try to come back the next council meeting and make a report on whatever the subject is. So, um, anyway, I just needed to throw that out there for some housekeeping. And then, uh, if there's nothing further, no further questions for the finance committee? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to department head reports, item number one, Attorney Dolan Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, council, the only thing that I have, well, two things, the only thing I have to report, I'm still looking into, um, basically the notice time limits, I know the council said two weeks for the dump ordinance. Um, I am still looking into kind of where the case law sits in terms of the removal of junk vehicles and the like. Um, one thing I did wanna ask, and this is a question for Chuck Puchusla, Greg. Um, in regard to the erosion permit, do we have any ordinance that, say if I were to go dig half a ton of dirt out and then it goes into the road, is there any law that would forbid that as of right now? I was just looking through this real quick. The reason I say that is, is if you guys have that permit in place and there's nothing legally that can be done if somebody doesn't, you know, actually pay for that.
I would have to review the street ordinance, because I think there is something there about, uh, getting rid of. Right off the top of my head, I can't think of anything, uh, other than industry ordinance.
Well, I'll, I'll take a look at it and if we need something, I can grab something out, just 'cause I know once you guys have a permit, then nothing happens to somebody, feel bad. And that's all I have, council.
Is there any further questions for, uh, Attorney Dolan Hughes? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number two, Court Treacher, Stacey Hager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have to report is that audit time is almost among us again. And so the auditors that have contacted is preliminary questions. So we'll be starting audits soon. And that's all I have.
Any further questions or any questions for Court Treacher, Stacey Hager? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, Public Work Supervisor, item number three, Greg Stoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first item, the twenty-twenty-five improvements project, we had the pre-construction meeting, we also did a stakeholder meeting to engage with the public that's gonna be affected by this project. It went very well and it was well received. We are looking at applying for a grant for a new dump truck. It's a VW, it's drawn through DEQ. I would just like permission to move forward with that process. We, we applied for this one for the garbage truck, we didn't get it. We funded the garbage truck from somewhere else, so we'd like to apply, do another application to replace nineteen eighty-six international dump truck.
Does the council entertain a motion for a public work supervisor to move forward with the grant process to get a new dump truck?
Some move.
Okay. We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion?
I have something, what do we look at?
So it's VW grant program through one DEQ.
Okay, I thought you were talking about VW.
No, no, it's VW is sued by the US for not, not. Admit issue for not controlling emissions.
Okay.
The money that was awarded in that, in that fund, um, DEQ uses it to replace aged and high emission trucks, typically diesels, or re, repower them. Um, this truck in particular, I think the fire department might have been called once or twice, we tried it in the meantime. It's, it's pretty bad. So we're looking at replacing this truck, it'd be a three-quarter, seven-five percent grant, point five percent.
Okay.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Uh, it's needed, because, uh, most of the dump trucks that are there, uh, I operated when I worked at the city five years ago. And they were old then, so it, it would be good to get some.
Currently, apparently we have the one that was built in this, and the rest of them are all late nineteen hundreds.
Uh, so we have a motion properly seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, council. Doug Abingdon's sort of project, the lift station has arrived and has been installed. We're waiting for Black Hills Energy to get its power so we can start the thing up. My next item, the West Barrero Street Water Project, we have the permit to construct application. I would like permission to sign that application to be able to get that started.
Does council, is it council's, uh, will to move to approve the Lionland Water Quality Application for Chapter 3 permit to construct by, uh, the Public Works Supervisor? So why, how do we assign it?
I did notice until after I sent it to everybody, you put my name on it, so.
Okay.
But through the resolution process, we, we are, it's still being, so.
Okay. We have a motion properly seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, the next item, the applications for J break signs and mayor have been sent to the wire. We're waiting for them to go through their, uh, new process and finalize that. Next item, just wanted to remind the Large Service Committee, um, the fourth we have that made the fourth. There are none. Are there any questions?
I would comment. Uh, the lift station getting done is a huge win for the city of Newcastle, so thank you for all of your work to get that done.
It's been a bit of a chore to get this to me, but it's your luxury.
A lot better than while I was there, and I'm sure it'll function a lot better too, and be a lot less maintenance and headaches to the shop. Um, is there anything further, any further questions for Public Works Supervisor?
I was going to ask you about the mayor. He said it was red to white out, like, uh, that was approached for that. I guess I had an accident there. Let's see what the status was.
Yep. The applications are white out. We're waiting for your review. Major, permission order. Go through everything.
Anything further? Nope. Okay, moving on to, I don't remember. Thank you, Greg. Uh, moving on to Engineer Even Etrip.
Engineer Mayor and council members. This is my first attempt to try to put together an engineer report that you probably haven't seen in quite some time. I'm bothered after the format that Greg used implicitly. Uh, rather go through this whole thing and I just hit a couple of ILS contingent procedures and a number of things. There's nothing to report in that category. I'm also welcome taking any input on things that I did not consider, Mr. Mayor. You want to see if we can accommodate that. But you see there, the first one there on the building department, over the last, last month and August, what the level of building inspections and permits were, were done there, a total of 25. There were no commercial construction projects to go this time. But you will see at the bottom the construction cost in that category of $192,000 plus for the construction cost and the total fees collected. Uh, then moving on to the project status, we have the Washington Department of Roofing, which basically we're carrying our wood into the hands. And some of that wood, roofs and railing, it's found to be more rotted and would need some space or some extra work to get that accomplished. During the process of painting, it's dated to now, um, so they're not ready to finish that up. And asset management on the second page, there are computer replacements. I spent the better part of today working with Marco to get, uh, a computer that I can use to work that I'm expecting to do. And so we got through a part where I could use it, but we still got to add some software to it. I'm aiming to be fully functional with that computer for the next few days. It's a lower relief to be able to use that machine. We also looked at, uh, still looking at the city hall for, we're going with the police department rather, the dispatch for the emergency generating location. It's questionable that we can put the generator on roof due to the little bit unknowns and whether it's completely. And therefore, we're looking at favoring the, uh, location to be on the ground. Or could that be the south, east corner? Uh, where the landscaping is right now, next to the parking lot. Would I also need to locate a propane tank in that same area? Make things compact there and have access to the side of the generator for maintenance and doing more on it. So I'll stop there in case you have any questions.
Any questions for Engineer Etrip?
Again, did you look through this? Uh, if you have any other categories I can try to elaborate on or provide more detail or even to add to?
I think this is great. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a thorough report and then it was a lot less lengthy as some engineers that we've had report with councils.
I'm sure there's some things that will come up in the future that need easier detail.
Oh, I think, I thought it was great. Thank you, sir, if you're welcome. Does anybody have any further questions for Engineer Etrip? We're just happy to have you at the council team, and we're happy to have you on staff, so thank you very much. There's no further questions. Moving on to item number five, Police Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item, the calls for service between August 18th and September 2nd. Newcastle Police Department, 130, with two arrests. Weston County Sheriff's Office, 134, Upton Police Department, 34. Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, 8, Weston County Fire Protection District, 7. Upton Volunteer Fire Department, 7. Newcastle Ambulance, 24. 20 of those calls were in Newcastle. Seven were transferred from the hospital. Weston County had four of those calls and that accounted for all of them. And Upton Ambulance, 5. The second item is I would like to request a conditional offer of employment to Brian Norris with a starting wage of $21.91 an hour, one year of probation. And this offer would be conditional upon completing the remainder of the hiring process to include things such as background investigation, fingerprinting, psychological evaluation, physical exam. And seems as though there was something else I needed to add to that. Oh, with this start date to be determined upon completion of those items.
Does the council entertain a motion to, uh, offer, uh, the conditional, uh, offer to Brian Norris for the police officer position?
I mean, fortunately, offer a conditional, uh, conditional employment offer to Brian Norris at $21.91 an hour for one year probation? After completing all the background check. So it's going to be determined after we're completed. Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Great job, chief, for you. I thought this was somebody else's. Get some more staff.
And my last item, I just wanted to let the council know that we have, um, started our internship program. We have one participating student at the moment. Our intention or the way, the way I've structured it so far, and I've requested said student provide as much feedback as possible. But the way I want to do it is essentially take them through the entire process from hiring all the way through becoming a professional. Just expose them to as many areas generally as I can. And the way I've chosen to do that in lieu of giving them any sort of firsthand experience for, due to confidentiality and safety reasons, is to do more of a scenario or mock-based program where I give them certain details that have them work their way through the case and collect the necessary evidence and, ultimately compile an affidavit or a charging document and learn how to compile reports and things of that nature. So my, my intention is to walk them through the entire process, um, mostly from a scenario-based angle to, to prevent any of the issues we've had in the past. I just wanted to let everybody know we were doing that and been working a lot with Councilman Boss on expanding this program to hopefully developing some employees that will come back and work for us in the future, maybe provide them some scholarship opportunities and things like that. Just wondering, any, any projects?
Yeah. Good to hear that it's moving forward. And thanks, Councilman Boss, for your help.
That's all I have to report.
Does anybody have any further questions for Police Chief Derek Thompson? Hearing none. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the claims against the city dated September 2nd, 2025. Does the council move to pay the claims against the city?
Still moved.
Second move. We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries. Uh, we have a motion to adjourn. Uh, we have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We earned, uh, 819, yeah. Thanks, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.